It's 7:00 PM.
All right. Ladies and gentlemen, let's call this meeting to order. This is the September 5th, 2017, meeting of the Village of Oxford Planning Commission. As always, we'd like to begin our meeting with a pledge of allegiance, so if you'd kindly stand and join me in that, I appreciate it very much.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Secretary, if you'd be kind enough to call a roll for us this evening?
Yes, sir. Johnson?
Here.
Curtis?
Here.
Deeg?
Here.
Fejma?
Here.
Douglas?
Here.
Helmuth?
Yes.
Gill?
I'll make a motion to excuse Gary Deeg and Russ Gill from the regular meeting commission meeting.
Second?
All right, Mr. Secretary, I have a motion on the table to excuse Commissioners Gill and Deeg. Do I have a second on that?
He had a couple of them.
I got a couple of seconds of it. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. I did hear from Russ Gill. Russ is traveling in Ohio this week and was not able to attend. I did not, I don't recall hearing from Gary Deeg, but...
Gary sent an email.
Fantastic. I appreciate that. Thank you. All right, we'll now entertain a motion to approve this evening's agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the Village of Oxford Planning Commission meeting agenda for Tuesday, September 5th, 2017, as presented.
Thank you very much. Mr. Secretary, I have a motion to accept the agenda and support. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, tonight's agenda is approved. Thank you very much. I'll now entertain a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes from August 1st, 2017.
I'll approve the regular meeting of August 1st, 2017.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to second?
Second.
All right. Mr. Secretary, I have a motion to approve the previous minutes from August 1st, 2017, and 2nd. If you'd be kind enough to signify your approval of that, by aye, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, thank you. Our previous minutes are approved. All right, I don't recall seeing any correspondence in this, in this package. Am I missing something?
Nope.
No.
All right, thank you very much. I will skip over that, as there is no correspondence to file. I don't believe we have a public hearing scheduled for this evening, so I'm going to pass over number 7. Please correct me if I'm wrong.
Nope.
All right, we're going to move on to item number 8, which is old business. Item 8A is 32 East Burdick Site Plan Approval, of being submitted by Dave Weckl. Chris, I think the floor is yours, unless you have some, unless somebody else has something.
Sure, thank you. As you all may remember, Dave was in a few months ago for the required design approval of this building at 32 East Burdick. PUD agreement that governs the entire development of the three buildings and parking lot along Mill Street there requires design approval for the building at 32 East Burdick and 19 Stanton, because when the PUD was originally approved, the design for those buildings had not been figured out yet. For the most part, well, not even for the most part, the first two stories are exactly the same as what you approved previously, but a third story has to be approved. The only thing that that changes, from our perspective, is the height of the building.
I'm sorry, say the last part again?
The height of the building, obviously.
Okay.
That third story increases the height. The maximum height of the district is 40 feet. The building as proposed is 40 feet, except for one point on the southern elevation. That little intrusion that comes out from the south and also goes to north, excuse me, it's a little bit, also goes up past the top of the building, that is a stairwell. My understanding from Mr. Weckl is that's about 40 feet, eight inches. The zoning ordinance exempts chimneys, spires, antennas, turrets, and similar projections other than signs, from calculating building height. Question for the Planning Commission is, is that a turret? Because I don't think it's a chimney, spire, or antenna. But if it's a turret, it can be approved at 40 feet, eight inches, and the entire design can be approved without any further ado. You don't define the word turret, so I don't have a whole lot of guidance, other than the idea that the word turret comes from medieval castle, where a turret would have a stairwell in it.
So, Chris, I believe that this is a stairway turret.
I'd like to hear the definition of the word turret. We're about to look it up.
Because indeed, turrets have staircases.
Usually, yes.
And this is a, this is a structure with staircase in it, so it looks exactly like a stairway turret to me.
Okay. I can't disagree with that.
Because I'm not sure what else you would call it. Some people might call it stairway for short, but that's not the correct legal term.
Oracle?
An architect, a turret is a small tower that projects vertically through the wall of the building, such as... How do you get more? This is not a picture of your building. Yes, and it's kind of cool. From the walls of buildings such as a medieval castle, turrets were used to provide a projecting definition, defensive position, allowing covering fire to the adjacent wall in the days of military fortification. As their military uses faded, turrets were used for decorative purposes. A turret can have a circular top, dah dah dah, doesn't really say anything about it. It might contain a staircase that projects...
See you go.
It might contain a staircase that projects higher than the building, however, a turret is not necessarily higher than the rest of a building.
Yeah, well, that part's covered with zoning ordinance, which just, a turret can be higher than the rest of the building. I think that it fits your reasonable definition of turret.
I think it does, too. I think it does, too.
I don't want any military stuff up there, David. You got it?
We're invaded.
All right, good. Carry on, Chris.
So, with that, you've had the rest of our review, but the rest of our review is basically identical to the last time. We already approved a Form-based Code waiver for this. It's already approved, it's taken care of. I guess, while we're here, I'd like to ask Mr. Weckl for an update on the project, where we're at as far as demolition, destruction, et cetera.
Dave, if you'd be kind enough to state your name and your address, please?
All right. Dave Weckl, 75, Berdick Woods Court, Oxford. This is much more enjoyable to talk about than the turret or the stairwell. I think it was just an oversight when they did those elevations, because the north elevation's 40 foot, and the south tower is a little bit higher, so it would look better. And the architect said, well, that should be approved, no problem. He couldn't be here tonight, his wife had to go to the hospital. But what's more important is the progress on the project. He's telling me that he could have the drawings done in a couple of weeks, and I applied for my building permit for Building B, which is the one we're talking about tonight. That's a smaller building, it's a 60 by 60 footprint, and when I was going through the whole process of the overall project, it didn't make sense not to do that one first, because I'd be putting that out in a corner and not having it very accessible for equipment and materials. So, we'd do that one first, and then go right to Building A from that point. I don't know if I'm going to need an extension. At this point, I'd say no, because I expect to have Building B roughed in by Christmas and start the foundation of Building A right after that. One of the houses that has to be tore down, we can't tear down until after October 24th, I believe it is. We're working with Pete and the Oxford Fire Department, Oakland County Community College, to hold classes in there, and they're scheduled, and I think that's the last date that's scheduled, is October 24th. So, that first house will come down immediately. I don't intend to take down the house on, there's two houses on Stanton, we'll leave one of them up, take down whatever is necessary for the parking lot, and let the other one sit there for maybe a year, depends how the project goes. Actually, having some very good response for these facilities that are coming to our town, so I don't think it'll be a problem at all. I'll probably come back and say, okay, you know, we're going to start that one six months after I start Building A. But it's all moving forward good. The agreement says I can't start until I start the, can't start 32 Mill until I start the parking lot. Well, as far as I'm concerned, I've started the parking lot, because I'm tearing down a house that is right in the middle of that parking lot, so I'm, it'll be gone, it'll be hard to use it for anything else, unless I build a new house there, probably won't do that.
No.
So, we're just looking to, you know, get Building B going and keep on moving.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions from my fellow commissioners? Thank you, Dave. Chris, carry on.
That's all I have. At this point, I recommend you approve the design of the building.
All right, is there any action we need to take this evening?
The motion.
Do we need a motion? Do we need to include the landscaping in that motion?
I would.
There were a number of things, yeah.
It was, that was included in the previous motion, but now that you have differently designed buildings, it should be clear that that still applies.
I'll make a motion to approve the revised building design with the following conditions: as previously required landscape plannings are required around 32 East Burdick, similar to those approved for 36 East Burdick and 19 Stanton Street; two, parking lot construction must commence east of Mill Street prior to construction beginning on 32 East Burdick; and, three, the applicant in the Planning Commission noted that the DDA Board has jurisdiction to extend the deadlines in Section 17 of the PUD agreement. End of motion.
Second.
Any further discussion? Mr. Secretary, I have a motion on the table, offered by Commissioner Curtis, and seconded by Commissioner Bama, I believe. With no further discussion, any comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, the motion carries. Thank you, Dave. Well done, Chris, thank you very much. All right, now, with that item of old business being completed, let's move on to 8B, which is sign ordinance amendment. Chris, if you'd be kind enough to give us a briefing on that?
Sure. I'm not sure how much information is aware, other than those of you that were at the council meeting a few weeks ago. The council did not adopt the recommended ordinance amendment. You guys worked for them. I had some discussion with them. They really are not the votes on council, they decreased the maximum size of freestanding signs. And I, at this point, recommend that we leave that alone at 24 square feet. If you guys want to push back, that's fine, but...
Chris, was, you were at that meeting, I assume?
I was not.
I was at that meeting. If you have any questions...
Would you be kind enough to give us a quick briefing on that? I'd like to know what the...
Oh, I don't know if I can be quick, but I'll give you a brief.
Well, I'm not in any particular hurry, but, you know, I'd like to know, I thought that was a very well reasoned argument. We put a lot of time into that recommendation of the council, and I was kind of surprised when I read in the paper that said they had refused to accept it.
A quorum of the council felt that there is always request for increasing square footage of signs. We started at 12, it goes to 16, then somebody wants 20, then somebody wants 24, and it just feel like it's time to put our feet down and say enough is enough, not grant special land uses, and not increase the signage as proposed. I guess that was brief.
All right, so, yeah, it was brief. What do we do when somebody asks for a 32 foot, 32 square foot sign? Because you know they're going, they're going to do it.
I can only tell you...
And they've got precedent, because they're going to say, they're going to count the number of businesses on 24 that have 32 square foot signs, and they're going to say, how can you deny me a sign?
I'm going to be very blunt when I answer.
Go.
Okay. We have granted special land uses for signs, way more than the Planning Commission hours said. Historically...
Well, I think that was part of our rationale for making the change to the ordinance.
Historically, signs, you want to make your sign, you need to go to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a variance. You go for a variance, there's certain case, things that you have to prove to get a variance. The zoning board of appeals was granting too many variances, the council took it away from the zoning board of appeals and gave it to the planning commission, thinking the planning commission would not grant as many special land uses. The planning commission continuously grants special land uses. We are not necessarily precedent setting board. If you want to stop granting special land uses for square footage, you just put your foot down and you say no. A quorum of us had to say no. Or we can make, you want to come to a special land use, treat it like a variance, you have to have this reason, this reason, this reason. Give me a good reason why you should have eight more square feet than the guy next to you.
Isn't, it seems to me the precedence is a very good argument.
I don't believe in precedence. We can just stop. Whereas, a different board, you haven't been on that board for 10 years, you haven't been on the board for 10 years, you haven't been on the board for 10 years. We have all new people on the board, there's, there's no precedent. Chris, how do you feel about that?
Let's see, I guess I agree with you on that overall, I agree with the overall idea of precedent, because special land uses are not supposed to have precedence anywhere. My concern is, based on the criteria that we have for approving special use signs, we have, if we want to start saying no, we have to come up with a reason why not, based on those criteria, which are, is a little bit tough when somebody is saying, and this is why, this is where it does come in as a precedent.
Exactly, that's my, that's my point.
It's not that you agreed to that before, but when you look at the criteria, which are things like you're going to block someone else's sign, or you're going to be out of scale with the surroundings, you don't, we can't say that when everyone is already 32 square feet, right? Or someone, somebody close to that. That's where we're going to have trouble. On the other hand, those right, they are one-off requests, and they don't all have to be approved. The other thing that could happen here is if there's, if the council wants to say, look, we'll have the special use sign process if you want to do something different, like Hummer Brewery wanted to get on the roof of the porch, and that was technically prohibited, but I think that's great.
I think it does, too.
I think, I think there's a lot of positive feedback when that sign. Maybe we should be using special use sign process for it, stuff like that. Why would you be, my site's a little different, I want to be creative, as opposed to just, I want a few more square feet.
Everybody's always going to want a larger sign.
Well, of course.
If I gave CJ 32 square feet today, in a year, he's going to want 40 square feet. Everybody wants a bigger sign. And I think it's time to say, at some point, enough is enough. I guess, I don't know what that point is. I guess my point was back about 20 years ago when it was 12 feet, but that's okay. And the, this planning commission just needs to decide, what direction do we want to go with this?
Well, I thought we did. We did that when we drafted a recommendation to the council and said, we believe, we believe this is what we should do.
And I don't disagree with you. And perhaps I was not the best person to argue that for the council. Maybe if someone else had been there to argue it for me, because it was not a great night for the village council.
I understand.
If we want to come up with a memo to give back to council and request that they, that we have gone over this, and we believe it's 32 square feet, let's send it back to council. I don't have a problem taking it back and fighting the act.
You know, I'm just afraid that we're buying ourselves some trouble here, because regardless of whether or not our actions of a commission are precedent setting, what Chris just said was very true, the precedent is out on the highway. And, you know, I'm not really relishing the idea of having a business owner stand before this body, saying, how can you deny me this sign when I counted 11 of them out here?
Here's how we deny it.
I mean, that's, you know, that's really, that strikes me as being very unfair.
And council said they didn't want 32 square feet, so we're not going to let anyone have 32 square feet.
That's what we're going to have to fall back on, but I know if I were a business owner and I was faced with that as an argument, I'd be pretty disappointed. I'm just saying, you know, I can see it coming, it's, you know, we're going to sit here, and we're going to have to remember this conversation.
I don't think this planning commission can base their decisions on whether or not the applicant is disappointed.
Well, that's true. I'm sure that over time, we're going to disappoint many people, but I also think that we try to, you know, dole out a measure of fairness when we take action.
Adam, you had an interest in the signs a couple times.
Well, the justification for the interest was the fact that we, there were a number of signs on the highway that were 32 square feet already, setting precedents. And so, why keep on approving these variances when there was already existing square footage on the road? So, that didn't make much sense, and that's why, that's why I approached the subject to, if we're just constantly just pushing over these approvals, then why not adopt the, why not consider a 32 square foot?
No, and I, I agree with you, Adam, and I don't think that we necessarily have sign size creep, which, you know, I would never be in favor of. I don't think anybody here in this room is really massively in favor of signs, it's just unfortunately, it's a, it's a necessity for the business people to let people know where they're located. And so, you know, I think that we have struck a fairly good balance. Obviously, at some time in the past, this body decided that they would approve a variance for 32 foot, or 32 square foot sign. And that happened repeatedly. So, obviously, the consensus was that a 32 square foot sign was not obsessively large, and the, the community would, would absorb it, if you will. I don't want a 65 foot sign, I have no desire to have a 36 square foot sign.
I would disagree with the very first statement you made only.
All right.
We do have sign creeping.
Well, we have, we have had.
Yes.
We have had.
And we still have.
But the community's gotten larger as well.
But the properties haven't gotten larger. The buildings haven't gotten larger.
Tonight, we're addressing this.
If Patterson's Pharmacy has a 24 square foot sign now, and wants 32 square feet, that building's size isn't going to change, that size is not going to change.
I understand, yep, you're right. Well...
And it's not something we, I mean, we can decide on this part tonight, or we can set aside if somebody wants to put some thought into it, and come up with another suggestion. I'll argue with either way the planning commission goes.
No, I, you know, the, the council spoke very clearly, and, you know, I, I can, I can also see their point. They, they, they don't want 32 square foot signs. And so, that then comes about, you know, we can either argue the point, hang on a second, Jack. We can argue the point and push it back on them, or we can accept their ruling and say, okay, this is what we're stuck with. Next time a business owner comes before us requesting a 32 square foot sign, we're going to deny it. And the rationale for that denial is that the council doesn't want 32 square foot signs. It's as simple as that. If you want to change it, lobby the council. Chris, please.
There is a standard in what you're supposed to consider when you're reviewing these, that says, not so much a standard is, it says that you may seek the advice of the DDA or other experts regarding special use sign. It seems to me the council could fall under that. You could say, it says in our ordinance that we are allowed to take the advice of an outside body. The council, as an outside body, has told us they don't want, they don't want us increasing the size of freestanding signs in the C1 transition.
Correct.
And, and it may be that the village office needs to start telling the local, they can come in. You can apply for special use sign, but it's not likely to happen, because the old council said they don't want to increase the size. Now, if you say, someone came in and they said, well, I need a freestanding sign that's seven feet tall instead of six, but I'm going to stay within the parameters of square footage, well, then maybe we can take a look at it. That's not even an example. The problem I have is that we don't have that many standards on freestanding signs. We really don't. We have two. We have size and location, and we're, you know, we're debating both of them right now. I think we do need to get into location.
Go ahead, Jack.
Yeah, we're, on the agenda tonight, we're not here to debate the sign size. We're here to debate the fact that the sign must be set back at least three foot from all lot lines, public sidewalks, and must meet clear corner vision standards in Section
I would argue that this is on the agenda.
That, what, the size of the sign?
This whole discussion is a sign ordinance amendment.
I tend to agree, Jack.
I don't agree, because what happened was, we made the recommendation to the village council, and the village council said no.
And they said no. So, I'm willing to accept that, I'm willing to accept that.
That's the end of that business.
I want to make it clear that everybody understands that we're probably going to pay a price for this at some point.
And that's future business, but the business tonight is we're trying to put this setback into place.
I agree. Chris, take it away, please.
Sure. I think you're all familiar, if not with, let go. The reasoning behind this setback. Right now, we have a, the building must be set back to 25 feet in order to have a freestanding sign at all. And that goes back to the old ordinance and the new Form-Based Code, and many stretches of F-24 requires exactly 20 feet, and lays out exactly how you must put in those 20 feet. And it doesn't make sense to me to say, okay, you went through all this, you got your 20 feet, it's perfect, just like the Form-Based Code. You can't have a sign, because you would have to have a setback that we don't even allow you to have, right? We don't allow you to have 20. So, it's a conflict, in my opinion, needs to be changed. And I think that this commission did a great job coming up with what works. The three feet from all lot lines or public sidewalks, we're going to provide a four by six sign, which would be the tallest possible sign at the tall, at the biggest possible area, three feet plus four feet, now you're at seven feet, you're going to want another several feet before the front of your building. You know, it's not going to fit on a lot where we think there isn't enough space, which was the original point of 25-foot thing, right? You're going to need at least 10, 12 feet of insisting setback to fit a sign. And I think that's completely realistic. So, I think this is fair, but effective, and so I actually, I really think this is important, this part of it. The size aspect, there's a lot of different things going on there, a lot of moving parts, but in the end, council, they're the elected officials, they vote a no. This, I'd like to bring back to them and say, we think that maybe this got lost in shuffle with the size aspect, because this is important, and I'm not sure why the status quo works, and I can't see that. The status quo, and honestly, I'd like to take some responsibility for the flawed status quo, something I missed during our broad zoning ordinance process, that we need to fix.
That's not out of the ordinary. Any, any comment or question from fellow commission? Jack, any comments?
I would just like to say that at council, I voted to approve the amendment.
I appreciate that.
Which was actually a vote against the motion, because it got really crazy, but...
Okay. I appreciate that. That's okay. You know, you win some and you lose some, that's okay, I don't mind, I don't mind that. We'll just deal with it as it comes forward. All right, so, Chris, then, this, we're revising the signage amendment.
Yes.
With this, with this specific terminology.
And I would recommend only another public hearing.
Okay.
Because this is a different amendment. The old amendment had the sign change, size change in it, that's no longer in this amendment, so it's a different amendment, in my opinion. Additionally, the no vote of council, I don't believe, you can't send them back the same thing, so I think we need another public hearing.
All right, I understand. Mr. Secretary, if you'd be kind enough to look up the rules for a public hearing and schedule this for us at a forthcoming meeting, so that we have enough time to notify the public, and we'll put that on our agenda, if you'd be so kind.
I'd like to, just make, I'll make a motion to schedule a public hearing for the first regular meeting in October, and then we should be able to meet all the requirements.
All right, I accept that motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Mr. Secretary, I have a motion from Commissioner Mo, and a second from Commissioner Johnson, scheduling a public hearing for the regular meeting on the 1st of October, where this item will be brought forward on a public hearing. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right, that motion carries as well. Thank you all very much. Chris, thank you very much. I always appreciate the thoroughness of the work that you do for us.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And this second page is just a, an example draft. All right.
It's a informal resolution, we'll look like.
All right, good, thank you very much. All right. Anything else under old business? Sign ordinance is complete. Moving on to item number nine, which is new business, there is no new business. Item number 10 is public comment, agenda, and non-agenda items. That opens the floor up to anybody here who has something to say, and we're happy to hear you. If you'd like to speak, please step forward to the podium and state your name and address. Madam President? Please state your name and address, please.
Ms. Sarai, Oxford Mishka. I'm going to move my DDA report up to public comment, because I want to introduce you guys in public to our new DDA Director, Glenn Pape. Glenn, if you want to come up here and tell them a little bit, something about your sign.
You knew this was coming, Glenn. You knew this was coming, Glenn.
Is the microphone working tonight?
It's not a microphone.
That's okay, I guess you're good.
Okay. Hi, I'm Glenn Pape. I've been on the job for six days now. My background is in downtown development. Planning and zoning placemaking is my forte, economic development. So, it's going to be a lot of fun over the next couple of years to see what we can do to push Oxford forward according to the plans that are in place.
Good.
If you have any questions, come visit me.
Where do you live, Glenn?
Where do I live? I live in Howell.
Okay.
Which was just voted one of the top 10 downtowns in the U.S., so...
Great.
Looking forward to getting that for Oxford.
Good. Well, Glenn, on behalf of the Planning Commission, we welcome you to the Village of Oxford, and look forward to a very eventful and successful relationship with you. Thank you very much. Appreciate your introduction, Madam President. Any other public comment, please? Step forward if you're inclined. All right, I'll take that as a no. No public comment. Consul and comments. Chris, the floor is open to you now.
We will be having another meeting in two weeks. You will, the Oxford Bank is proposing to replace some of their signage with internally illuminated signage. Sorry, I'm talking signage again.
Better not be 32 square feet.
The, what has been approved, or what has been submitted meets all the dimensional standards, but the reason has to come to you. It's not a special use sign. It's because within the downtown, internally illuminated signs are required to get Planning Commission approval. So, it's coming to you. You're just going to be looking at the design, and if you like it, you're going to approve it. Just a heads up of what's coming next.
Okay, thank you very much. Commissioner comments? Oxford Township Planning Commission update, Jack Curtis?
Three things in the township. We just had a one-stop audit with Ryan Divdeck from, and Joe Frost from One Stop at the Oakland County. They came through and checked all our processes to make sure we had them in place, and if there were any deficiencies, they were so noted for us to correct. You may have read, we denied rezoning of the commercial 7.7 acres in Waterstone from commercial to RM1, based on a lot of unanswered questions, and the density, and the use of the lake, and some citizens' concerns. It was denied at the Planning Commission, the rezoning. We also denied a PUD for Beehive Homes. That was set to go, requested to go in behind the McLaren Building next to the Goddard School. Again, the density was of concern, setbacks were of concern, and sewer REUs were concerned. So, that, too, was denied. So, those three items are what's new in the township.
All right, thank you, Jack. Will Beehive be... I'm sorry, Chris, go ahead.
Jack, Beehive, was that for senior housing?
Yes.
Okay. I have been contacted by that applicant regarding empty land in the villages in the Flex District. Based on my initial conversations, I think that the land that they look at in the village has, is in better shape for things like setbacks and other things of that nature than what they were looking at in the township, so we may be able to find them a spot that works a little better. We'll see.
Beehive, Beehive is actively still seeking to come to Oxford. The demographics show that they can fill that place up pretty good. Yes.
All right, good. Thank you, thank you both for that. Commissioner Bama, you have a ZBA update, perhaps?
There are no updates right now.
No updates. And we already have a DDA update? Glenn, we're really glad to have you aboard. It's going to be fun, look forward to working with you. All right. Commissioner?
Sitting in the back corner is our new active village manager. I don't know how many of you have met him? How many of you met him? Oh, come on up, Evan. This Evan Teach. He's our active village manager. Suddenly, down at all of us, our last meeting was August 1st, and you were not here.
Huh. What do I know? Evan, if you'd be kind enough, state your name and address, and state your business.
I'm Evan Teach. I'm the interim village manager for the Village of Oxford, currently residing in Addison Township. So, welcome, I'm glad to be here. Enjoyed your meeting and your discussion on signs. I think it's very appropriate, and I think that the council's discussion was also very pointed, and having been in this business for 30 years, there's never a sign limit. If you do set it at 24, someone wants 26. If you, if you say you can't have internal illumination, they'll find a candle. So, it's a balance, and you guys had a great discussion tonight, and I think maybe sometimes, maybe a different format of how things get presented to boards, and things like, I've found that workshops work out very well with one board and another board get together in a non-big, top setting, and you can talk about what you guys see, and what businesses are asking you, and they can give you their perspective, and then you can come to some good compromises, and then do things holistically that way. But, in general, and I've talked to Chris a little bit, and I know his role here, it's tough. I mean, not all buildings are flat to the facade of the road, not all have the same heights. Some of them don't have the money to do the type of signage they want, they just need a presence. So, it's, it's an interesting balance, and I thoroughly enjoyed the definition of turin.
Good. I appreciate that. Evan, how long will you be able to be with us?
I'm going to be with you until the village fills the manager role. There are going to be interviews scheduled in the coming weeks, and I have promised the president that I would stay on to try to help a little bit of that transition. And so, I would imagine at least in a... Is that rain?
Yeah, I was believing any time soon.
Yeah.
I'll be here for six to eight weeks, probably.
Good, I appreciate that. It's good to have you here.
And I have found the town to be fascinating and well-done. I think your downtown is awesome, and people love it, and the parking that got established, and now with Glenn at the DDA with some guidance and experience, I think you guys are on the right track.
Good, much obliged. Thank you, Evan.
I'll answer any questions. I know it's getting late. I'm sure you all want to go run on the rain.
Of course. Evan, personally, I really appreciate good communication. And so, anytime you feel the need to reach out and notify us of something that's upcoming, or keeping everybody herded together, I always appreciate it. And sometimes that has to fall to me, and that's when it becomes scary, so...
You know, I'll give you maybe a little bit, you know, you guys have a very tough job, very tough. You are the ones that have to say no, and usually the first ones to say no, to good people, who either want to establish a business, invest in the community, et cetera, and studying the standards. And again, back to the communication with the board, you approving something that they are not going to approve still means something. It means that it is, it is worthy of a conversation to allow. If the board turns around and says yes or no, it sets standards, and standards last for a very long time. The buildings you are allowing to be built today should be here 100 years or more into the future. So, if you make, if you want to call it a mistake, that mistake will be there for a long time, and then somebody else may want to build upon that mistake. And there's a lot of communities in the United States who wish they had maybe held to a firmer standard, and can't get it back. So, those types of conversations are gladly had boards to commissions and things of that nature, because it just lasts forever. And people who drive through your community go, "Why did they do that?" That's all they remember as they drive through, whatever that is.
Understand.
I applaud your work, and I know you guys are getting paid handsomely
Of course.
For your time spent, so...
Good, thank you, Evan.
Thanks, Evan.
Any other questions, commissioners?
I'd just like to comment that I like to get my packet a little earlier than, than a couple minutes before the meeting. And that's all. It's a personal...
That's why I said, that's why I said, "Good communication is really important." It's always nice to get a packet a couple of days in advance, if it's possible. But I recognize that...
I was, I sent those out myself. I send them out via email.
Yes, you did.